Call the meeting to order. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. The flag is still, I think, at Shopko. So, I have a little flag on my tie here. Okay, so just do the pledge of allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Do a roll call.
Brady. Rose.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Belsky.
Here.
Celebry. Kubicki.
Here.
Ashke.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Oday.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Ron Frederick. Nudo.
Here.
Franco.
Here.
Boyd Frederick. Maurer.
Here.
Gully. Wamboldt. Uhhas.
Here.
Beth. Hommerville.
Here.
Decker. Lewis. Supervisor Nordigan is excused.
Thank you. Right now, we'll have the Sheriff's Department's gonna do a demonstration, and they want us outside first before it continues to rain any harder, okay? So, out the main door. It was brought to my attention that any supervisor who wants to do a ride along with a deputy sometime, just call the Sheriff's Department, they'll make arrangements. Well, front seat, backseat, I don't know. Something. But you're welcome, just make an arrangement with them. They're gonna do some demonstrating over here where the screen is now.
Probably gotta be away from the mic every now and then, so I'll try to talk real loud. I do have some stats. To play around with much. Middle button. You're done? Time's fast. Fast, it'll turn off. So, so we're passing those around, all this again on briefly talk. It's recording. Patched. So, every time a officer or deputy gets dispatched to a call, every call, there's a .25" bubble around every call. The deputy drives into that bubble of the call. Recording, that's another failsafe that we have built into the system, so they don't have to. So you get close enough to their call, that's odd, starts recording, the quad camera does, and. Recording. Turn it off. Stop recording, that I spaced off of the. As it's recording, it is actively uploaded via the cell. So, we can get real-time data into the, I'll show you. As the recording supervisor can log into their camera and. Critical scene, we can get real.
One of the videos that I want, that I do want to show you on the screen is the running trigger. That, uh, this is just a demo video, but it's a good video of just a general understanding of the overall quality of the video and just that, that one specific trigger of running. So this is just, it's a different department, this was a, a test video that came from Utility. But it's a, it's a good video. So what, what the video is, is it's, the department has a 30-second pre-record enabled, so that means when they hit the record button or that trigger kicks on, it's gonna jump back 30 seconds automatically, so they don't have to do anything. It'll, it'll capture that pre-record. So it's 30 seconds without audio. Currently, right now, we have one minute pre-record with audio for the commercial service department. So it's a little different setup. But once he starts running, you'll hear the, um, audio kick on. That's when that trigger happened, okay? And it also gives you this good field of view, this 140-degree little bubble of how the video actually looks when it's mounted inside the vest. Now again, this is that 30-second pre-record, there's no audio, ours is one minute with audio. Sorry, the volume's not up very high, but it's going. And, uh, he did nothing to activate this besides running. It automatically started recording for him. So, I've reviewed a lot of videos, and that's pretty much what they look like. They're, they're pretty clear. They have that little fisheye bubble to them. And he stopped it using his little wristwatch of his that he, that he has there. Any questions on that video? The next thing I do want to go over is our AvailaWeb, this is the program that, uh, every deputy and supervisor has access to. This is the new program, uh, from Utility, how we can track and log all the body cam footage and the data that the body cams collect. So the screen that we're looking at right now is our live screen. It's using Google Maps, but all the little dots that you see on the screen are body cameras and squad, and squad cameras. Okay, so all the green dots are active devices. All of the gray dots are inactive devices, they go inactive after eight hours or if they shut off their device. So if they power it off at the end of their shift, it'll turn to gray. So that's, that's all those are. So if I hover over this person, there's nine people in this cluster, nine different deputies. And when they're blinking this red and that means they are actively recording right now, so something's going on, they're in a call, something, something's happening. If I go to zoom to cluster, we'll see that they're all on this road here. And they're currently at a family trouble call. So I'm not gonna view their livestream just because of the sensitive nature of these calls, but if a supervisor wanted to, he could just click on here, and then there's this initiate livestream button right here, and it would pull it up and stream it live, what he's doing currently. Okay, again, I'm not gonna do that just because of the nature of the. The dispatch and this system communicates together, so it's pulling the CAD data. So on the screen is these little triangles, that's just the calls for service that is actively pulling from the CAD. So, once it pulls it from the CAD, it sends that information to the body camera, so it automatically classifies it for the retention periods, and it automatically puts the case numbers associated to them, so it properly logs these pieces of evidence that they take. Another feature for supervisors and admin is just to kinda keep track of what everyone's doing on the system, because there's a lot of users that we have for the Sheriff's Department. Um, one of the, just a little fun fact that we can pull up is how much data that we've already used uh, since we've been live for just over three weeks now. We've used 6.42 terabytes of data. Right, and that's all housed in the cloud, right, on, on Amazon servers, that's where it's housed at. So that would be very costly if we had to actually store that in-house. So, and that's only three weeks of storage. It's six, almost seven terabytes of storage, that's a lot. Down here, it says, and it's a little small on the screen, but it says total incidents by classification, so each time they have an incident, they have to classify their videos or auto-classifies, and they actually, it gives you this nice cool spreadsheet of, you know, what's going on, what's the most popular call, calls. We'll be able to see if, maybe if we have an uptick in burglaries, this is where we would see that, you know, we'll see the little slider bar keep going up and up, so we'll be able to adjust appropriately there. We can check the batteries of the, uh, the deputies that are on the field quickly, in case, you know, we need to remind them to charge them. And then another thing that I wanted to go over really quick is the media button here. So this is how a supervisor or a deputy would find their pieces of evidence after they are uploaded into the system. So like I said, once they're recording, as they're actively recording, it's, it's uploading via the cell network all the time. But once it gets fully uploaded, it's available in the system for them to view, to modify, as far as putting the case numbers in or different case numbers or classifications or multiple classifications, that's how they get their, their info on here. So again, I just want to show you how much data that is stored already on AvailaWeb servers since we've been launched. Um, it's currently, we're up to 17,435 pieces of evidence, and that is mostly body cam footage. There are some pictures on here, because they can take pictures with their phones, they can take out the phone and take still pictures, but that's the majority of it is, is body cam footage, so it's a lot of data. So it's very important that our deputies are going back and putting in these different classifications and case numbers. So, I do have a couple videos, because there's so much data, I had to go through and find some good videos. Uh, I do have some good videos that I do want to show you. Just of traffic stops and just every, every day, what a deputy does on the road. This is a traffic stop from Deputy Mashenke, and I do want to play it for you, but before I play it for you, I do want to just walk through this screen to kinda show them what they have to do every time they get back to their squad car after the call's done. So again, they can click on this classify button. He, this was a traffic stop, and he issued a citation, so he had to go back in there and click that citation button, so it accurately, um, saves the retention period. We can see our chain of custody for this, every piece of evidence, in case, you know, something comes up, or every time that he views it or I view it, or if I send it to the DA, it's all logged onto here properly. It's very important for chain of evidence. It gives you all the metadata below it, the start times, dates, uh, how it was recorded, how it was stopped. Uh, for this instance, his door turned on the body cam for him. Okay, so it says the door trigger started it, he turned it off later with his Bluetooth remote after the call was done. So again, I just want to play this for you and just let you see how this actually looks on our end. Okay, so that is the body worn down feature on the device, we'll go over that in a second. So right now, he is driving, on the right, you can see the screen. Can you call dispatch and just let them know I'm good? So on the right, you can see the little screen, that's, that's his squad car driving as it's recording, so it kinda gives you a two-view of what, what's going on. Right now, his, his body camera's being covered, sorry about that, his body camera is being covered by his seatbelt. So, great, he's wearing his seatbelt, right? But in a second, you'll see him take it off. On the very bottom down here is the different triggers that happened on the, on the video. This light bar, he activated his light bar, that was part of the, that was part of the trigger, right? We'll just, we'll just watch this for a second. So he opened his door and it automatically started recording, right? So it's, it's recording for him, he didn't do anything to activate that. So we don't have, need to keep playing the whole thing, but we get an idea of what the video looks like. You know, this is one of our deputies, right? On the very bottom, every time he opens his door, it logs every time he opens his door, every time he hits his brakes, every time he turns the sirens on, it logs everything for us, so it's, it's good data to have. But again, it's those triggers, those really important triggers, so we don't miss these crucial moments of recording, right? So that was during the day, obviously that's in prime lighting conditions, right? Hold on one second. So what you were hearing was our body worn down. So when a dis, when a officer or deputy goes prone or goes in a weird position, I was in a weird position, I was like kinda slumped over. So, if it goes, if the device is in a weird position, it sends this alert to dispatch saying that I'm down, that the dispatch needs to check on me, right? They know we're doing this right now, so that's probably why they didn't check on me. Um, and I just canceled the alarm, but in the field, it does, and these guys can attest to this, that they, they do check on them and they have to manually click that off, and that's what I did. Okay, so if the, if they're searching a car and they're bending down for too long, it'll set off this alarm, but again, it's a, it's a safety measure, it's, it's to make sure that they're, they're okay on the field. And it's a, it's a good thing. So this is a, a deputy at night, right? Not, not prime lighting conditions, and this is one I want to show you. Again, it's, it's just another traffic stop, but it just gives you a good feel of it. I'm not gonna play the entire thing, I'm gonna skip ahead until when he opens his door. So we can actually see what the video looks like outside the squad car at, at nighttime. This is 2:00 in the morning, too. Alright, so, right, dark, it's dark out, there's not a lot of lights besides what the cars are producing and the streetlights, but it's still a pretty clear video, we'd be able to get a lot of evidence off of that if something happened. I would like to show you a video from our correction side, because we have a lot more body cameras on correctional officers than there are deputies out there. This is one of the dorms out at, uh, KCDC. She's just walking through it. So every one of these officers here are actively recording, we are fully deployed right now, so everyone has a body camera at this point. Alright, so we get the idea. And then one last thing I do want to show you is, um, from our conveyance unit, import, uh, prisoner transport, inmate transport. This is one of the transport vans. What it looks like in the back of the van. It's gonna take a second, because it has to sync all the videos together, but eventually it'll start playing together as one continuous video. So this is them driving down the road, this is the front camera. This is the middle pod of the van, and then these are the divided pods in the very back. So you can see the inmates in there. They're tight quarters. But again, we can see the inmates, this is the first time we've ever been able to see any kind of inmates in the back of our vans, we've never had cameras back there, so this is a huge improvement for us. We had a lot of complaints in the past about things that may have happened in the back. Well now we can have some evidence of what happened back there, which is great. Any questions on any of these videos? Yes?
I'm wondering, um, the watch was very easy to turn on and off?
Yeah, so it's one button to turn it on, and it's three clicks of this little corner button to turn it off.
Okay, so if somebody were to grab your wrist, they couldn't easily turn it off?
It'd be really hard to, these buttons, you really have to press down.
Okay.
If you get the camera around eventually, if you press on the buttons, they're, they're not the easiest buttons to press if someone just grabs your wrist, no. They could probably activate it by just the one button, but to hit the three buttons to stop it, it'd be pretty rare.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So that's really just a super brief overview of AvailaWeb, and I will take questions, yes?
Going back to when you, you stated that a supervisor or whoever can livestream a deputy out in the field, are they notified that that's happening or no?
There's two ways we can do the livestreaming. So if they're actively recording out on a call, there is no notification that they get. The supervisor can just tap into it and start watching it. Now that's all logged on this chain of custody per piece of evidence, like I showed you before, the chain of custody on every evidence. So, it's logged if a supervisor does click and view that livestream. If they're not actively livestreaming, a supervisor has the ability to turn on their camera to start it recording and to then view the livestream then. That time, it does actually give them an audible saying that their camera's gonna be recording, and then the message that comes with that, uh, recording.
And then in the jails, are those body cams are on all day?
Yeah, pretty much, uh, their policy states that when there's a potential for them, excuse me, when there's a potential for inmate contact, they have to be recording. Or if they're around an inmate, they have to be recording. So they're, they're pretty much recording the entire time, except when they're going on breaks or when they're not have that potential for that inmate contact.
And what, what does the battery life look like inside the jail? I mean, does it last them all day?
So it's, we have our growing pains right now, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, it's, uh, most of them are lasting the entire 12 hours, but it depends on what they're doing with the camera throughout the day. If they're pulling it out of their shirt and they're playing with it, you know, doing the classifications on the phone, that drains the battery really quick. Um, if they're doing multiple recordings on and off, on and off, on and off, that'll drain it really quick. The majority of them are lasting the eight hours, if they're doing a lot of that hard work. Uh, but if they're just sitting there recording, they're, they're getting their, almost their full 12 hours. What they're doing right now is when they go on their mandatory 30-minute break, they're, they're plugging them in while they're in their break room, so it gives them that extra boost to last through that, that next part of their shift.
And then, so then on the road, it sounds like that's not really an issue for deputies on the road?
No, we've only had a couple incidents where the camera did die, and the next week after that, or the next few days after that, it wasn't an issue with the same kind of work that they did. So it was maybe just the phone having a hiccup for that time or whatnot, but for the most part, the eight-hour shift that the deputies are doing, it's lasting the entire time.
And it, does it send up, like a push notification to, uh, the, the command, uh, if somebody's phone does die? Un, unbeknownst to them?
No, no, it does not.
Okay, so somebody would have to be looking at that screen to see, you know, deputy, whoever, their battery's getting kinda low, and that's when you guys would send a heads up?
Correct.
Okay, alright, that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
You had mentioned that the videos are uploaded basically in real time. What happens if deputies out in the field in an area where there's low cell service? Is it, um, just temporarily recorded onto the squad, uh, uh, onto the squad's laptop or onto the cellphone itself and then updated when it gets within cell range?
Sure, if they're, if they're totally out of signal, right? And so the phone itself has 27 hours of recording time on it, so it's, it's got a pretty good chunk of memory on it, so it'll, it'll store it on the local device until it can start uploading and, and purging it off of the phone. Once they get back to the squad car though, the squad car will actively take over the phone, and it gets synced up with the squad car, and it, it'll take that video and that data off the phone and put it onto the squad, uh, memory in, in the rear, in the, in the backseat, it'll put it on there, which is, there's 120 gigabytes on there, so it'll hold a lot more than just the phone does. So there's, there's a couple different ways to make sure that the phone doesn't get full in the field. Yes?
In the event that, in corrections, that a officer has their phone charging and they need to respond right away, a first team responder or something like that, what is the policy? Uh, like, I work corrections for the state. My first reaction is gonna be to respond. I might not automatically grab that phone right away. What's, what's the play in that?
So, I mean, they, that could happen, right? It could be sitting there charging, and if they just take off running, and, I mean, that, that definitely could happen. Uh, but right now, you know, they have to get relieved from their post to go on break. I don't, I don't really have a good answer for that. It, it could happen if it's, if it's left there and they take off running for a scene or something like that, they get something on the radio. Uh, but the, per policy, they're supposed to have it in them when they're going back, uh, out on the floor. Does that answer your question? Kind of?
It, it does, I just.
Yeah.
Hope that we don't see a whole lot of disciplines just falling through, going, you know, right away.
I'm with you on that one, I, I hope not either.
Extenuating some circumstances.
Right, and, and you know, for the most part, the correctional officers are all on board with this, you know, they are all very receptive of the training, so I haven't had any real pushback of using these body cameras, so, which is great. Any other questions for me? That's all I have for my presentation then. Okay, got one more in the back. As far as what? I was not in charge of that, I, I don't have that answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I don't have a question for you, but I do want to note that, uh, you know, when, when this was in front of us last summer, I know I can't speak for anybody else in the room, but for me, this goes far beyond what I had in mind, and I think this, this, I think this is more transparent, not only for our law enforcement, our corrections, um, for, for corrections, those where they are, are housing, interactions with the public, uh, to know.
uh, not only for our law enforcement, our corrections, um, for, for corrections, those where they are, are housing, um, interactions with the public, uh, to know that God forbid, one of our law enforcement officers out in the field, uh, is down for some reason, that that body camera is going to note that, is going to tell dispatch that if for some reason that officer, deputy is incapacitated. Uh, I think the Sheriff's Department here, props to, to that team, you guys did a great job with selecting, uh, based on what I see, uh, the vendor for this project, so, uh, props to you guys, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for the demonstration. Sir, motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded by Nudo and Rodriguez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, thank you.